I don't have any alcohol, so I'm gonna need my water bottle. Um, and uh, call our finance meeting to order. Um, Amanda, are we recording?
It is recording and we are live on YouTube.
Okay, terrific. Um, it is Thursday, um, December 7th. And we are a couple of minutes after the hour. I'm Kelly Lessons, board member and finance committee chair. And I'd like to go around to the right for introduction. Jared Ryan, superintendent.
Andy Rabelt, chief financial officer.
Spengas is in chief academic officer.
Perfect.
Andy Hall, school board.
Andy Higgins, school board and the book of the committee.
Amanda Foster, executive assistant for the board.
Dr. Pike.
Oh, me. I'm just taking notes where everybody is, right? I'm Larry Pikeus, um, visitor.
Hi.
Diane Hershberg, director of ICER at UA.
Our guest.
Mark Foster, visitor.
Corey Ace, teacher and agent.
Okay, terrific. Thank you all for being here. Um, we have one item on our agenda today, and that is an opportunity for really an open-ended conversation with, um, Dr. Larry. Oh, I'm sorry, we have four members online. I am remiss.
Yes, no problem. Thank you. Welcome, Dr. Pikeus. Welcome, Diane. Good to see you again. Um, anyway, Margot Bellamy, uh, board president. Thank you and welcome. I think, uh...
Well, some...
But she was trying to get...
Dora is trying to get on. I'll let you know when she's on.
Yeah, she's been having some technical difficulties today.
Okay, she is trying.
Well, we, uh, received notice that, um, Dr. Larry Pikeus, with whom, uh, the board has, uh, worked for, I guess, a number of years now on a couple of instances, uh, is in town through the efforts of, um, ICER and also the Alaska Association of School Boards. And so it seemed like a really timely opportunity to really discuss the question of adequacy. Um, so in order to do that, maybe before I open the floor for conversation, um, I wanted to share a brief PowerPoint presentation that I put together that hopefully will remind everyone of, um, I don't know, sixty years of history really quickly, um, in a nutshell. And how did we get here? So, um, let's go to the next slide. So, in January of nineteen fifty-six, uh, shortly, a few years before statehood, uh, members of the Alaska Constitutional Convention's Style and Drafting Committee, um, added an early draft of the Public Education Clause in what became Article VII at for health, education, and welfare. And whereas they had originally said that the state shall establish and maintain by general law a system of public schools which shall be open to all children of the state and may provide for other public educational institutions, they scratched that out, as we can see in this document from State Archives, and really wrote in legs, short for legislature. And in, uh, what was formally adopted, it goes in fact, read the legislature. So they were very intentional, um, about who is responsible for establishing and maintaining our system of public schools. And, um, I've mentioned in a couple, and next slide, please, Ms. Foster. I've mentioned in a couple of meetings that I've been spending some time over the last couple of months reviewing, um, the trajectory of maintenance of education and the evolution of different formulas. Uh, before statehood, we had a dual system of schools that were funded by the Bureau of Indian Affairs and schools that were jointly funded by the territory and municipality. Statehood ushered in the first formula. Um, there have been, to my understanding, roughly four formulas following statehood, um, the most recent of which is now, uh, a quarter of a century old. Um, and that was really what transitioned us into what we know now as something that relies on the base student allocation. We have additional, um, uh, data that's informed by the district cost factor. Um, and it was a massive shift from funding schools by instructional units, uh, for example, in prior formulas. Uh, next slide, please. Um, in two thousand and one, after Senate Bill Thirty-Six was passed, the Department of Education, um, responded with an educational adequacy report. And this is from the DEED website. And they had commissioned a statewide, um, uh, conven- a convening of stakeholders from across the state, um, who determined that in Alaska, an adequate education shall provide all students to acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to prepare them to, to take a productive role in society. And then they identified necessary components of an adequate education, being exposed to locally adopted curriculum that meet or exceed state standards, being taught by qualified educators who have the time and support for professional development, that students learn in a safe environment, that facilities are well-maintained, that students have diverse learning needs met, which is really important. Um, I think one of the things that I personally found prior to the nineteen eighty-eight formula is that, um, new federal mandates governing special education and bilingual education really began to cut into the funding available for regular instruction. So there are some remarkable reports from about nineteen ninety-one from ICER detailing how that worked and what that meant specifically in the Anchorage School District. Um, so continuing DEED's findings in two thousand and one, there need to be effective partnerships, uh, that school buildings have appropriate technology and that all students have age-appropriate opportunities to participate in all aspects of school life, including student activities. And I think that this is really salient right now as we confront a forty-five million dollar gap from our ninety-eight million dollar start-of-year deficit, um, how we're going to close that gap. Uh, but the, the DEED, um, committee concluded that the educational adequacy of the school funding formula must be measured against the base student allocation set in Alaska statute. So adequacy measured against the BSA. Um, next slide, please.
And just, um, like, the member Wilson has joined.
Thank you so much. Um, this is a slide that's a few years out from, um, Alasbo, uh, which they took from Legislative Finance in June of twenty seventeen. And it shows the history following the nineteen eighty-eight adjustment, um, to the foundation formula of a funding per student. Um, and because Alaska is such a diverse state, that really doesn't accurately reflect Anchorage's funding, which skews lower, uh, because Anchorage has really been the base throughout this time. Uh, but you can see that, um, there's a different Alasbo slide that I didn't include that shows, yes, overall state funding increased, but so did our student population. And so when you look at a per-people basis adjusted for inflation, the decline in purchasing power is profound, uh, through the turn of, um, the century. And adjustments in the nineteen ninety-eight formula, if you look very closely at a per-people basis, there's a slight uptick in FY ninety-nine, and then we drop again. And then the increase following FY oh-five really reflects, um, the new district cost factors. And those are going, those, um, impacted, um, really districts around the state more heavily than Anchorage itself. Um, so this doesn't bring us quite up to today. It's a data slide, uh, but I thought it was useful for the record. Um, one of the other things that happened, thank you all for your indulgence here, in two thousand and seven, please, next slide, is that there was a case, Moore, the Moore case, uh, versus Alaska. And, um, Judge Gleason found, interestingly, that the question, and I'm sorry, this is a little bit off-center here on s- on the screen. The question in this case, whether the public education system in Alaska is constitutionally adequate, cannot be framed solely in terms of funding, but also must address the opportunity for children to obtain an education. And Judge Gleason found that, um, this had to do maintenance, that legislative mandate has to do with standards, assessment, funding, and oversight. And the other thing that I found really interesting about the Moore case, um, and I know that tomorrow it's going to be a subject of discussion at the AASB, uh, Policy Day, is that education funding, Judge Gleason found, uh, must be adequate to provide a meaningful opportunity to meet the state's standards. It doesn't mean that it needs to be inflation-proofed. Um, so that's an interesting tension between what DEED found in two thousand and one and what Judge Gleason found, I think, um, in two thousand and seven. Um, but, but I think that for us as a board, it's important to think about, do our students, do all of our students have the opportunity, as Judge Gleason found, to obtain an education? Um, next slide, please. So, um, in two thousand and fifteen, this is now eight years ago, um, the Anchorage School Board, um, authorized a study, a financial adequacy, adequacy study that would assess, using current research and evidence, um, whether ASD and Alaska as a whole finances were sufficient to provide adequate resources that will ensure that all students have an opportunity to meet their state proficiency standard and be prepared for college and careers. Um, the result of that stud- the study, uh, relied on the work of, uh, Dr. Pikeus, Dr. Auden, um, and, uh, next slide, please. And followed, um, what, um, our experts have called the evidence-based model, which, uh, goes beyond the twelve items noted here. The table is just too large to put on one PowerPoint slide. Uh, but it's really a staffing guideline. And the Anchorage School Board's findings from this study, if you look on the right-hand side of the screen, uh, found that, oh, that's perfect. Thank you so much. Um, that in Anchorage, we staffing for K-12 only, sort of exclusive of pre-K, found a shortfall of over five hundred FTE at this point in time. Um, so there was a comprehensive evaluation of, of everything that we had, and everything the evidence-based model had, uh, that recommended. Um, and, uh, we did not, um, have the staffing levels that the evidence-based model recommended. Uh, next slide, please. These findings were shared with the Anchorage delegation in January of two thousand and sixteen. This is according to, um, items I found in board docs. Um, and in summary, our teaching levels were roughly seventy percent of those that the evidence-based method, uh, had found. Um, and in fact, statewide, most of Alaska to six were found to fall short of the teachers that were needed. Um, so I think that was strong evidence that inadequate funding at that point in time was being provided. Next point and, next slide, please. Um, additional findings specifically, uh, supported additional certified, certificate of teaching resources for students eligible for free and reduced lunch and, um, English language learner and pre-K students. Um, these will be posted. I want to make sure we have time for conversation. Um, so again, I was just copying and pasting these, uh, for the board. Um, in two thousand and seventeen, please, next slide. The board received an update from the administration, um, of the chart sort of on the left comparing the evidence-based model with practice at that point in time. I took the liberty of running some numbers, and my calculation based on the number of elementary, middle, and high schools was about a seventy-seven point eight million dollar shortfall for providing those staff ratios. Um, next slide, please. Um, and if you could scoot over, um, this was a more formal presentation that the administration prepared for the board in two thousand and eighteen. Um, at that point in time, the gap was a hundred and fifteen million dollars to provide staffing for the evidence-based model. Next slide, please. And, um, over the better part of a decade, uh, this was a presentation in February of twenty twenty. The Anchorage School Board was presented with a summary of aggregate staffing level reductions that had taken place between FY thirteen and FY twenty-one. And you can see that most, uh, areas exclusive of special education, uh, at that point in time had been reduced. Um, and I, I would, I would interpret this as really a focus on maintaining dollars towards instruction. Um, to, and, and so the, because there has been a board and administrative attention to preserve people-teacher ratios, um, as, as much as humanly possible. Um, next slide, please. And I've used, I don't know if you can zoom to include... So I've used some of, um, our annual comprehensive financial reports to go back over the PTRs over the past, uh, from FY thirteen through, through the present. And you can just sort of look, um, it goes from K to twelve, and you can just see a gradual increase in PTRs across all grade levels as there has been, um, very little left to cut. And notably, if you look at the, that green and red section, that's allocation of federal relief funds that have prevented, um, additional losses of teachers and increases of people-teacher ratios. So in the sum, it's spring, summer of twenty, um, of twenty twenty, the receipt of federal relief funds allowed us for FY twenty-one to reverse the board's elimination of health teachers in a pandemic. Um, the following year, federal relief funds prevented a plus-four K-12 PTR increase. The following year, a dose for FY twenty-three, a dose of fifty-six million dollars prevented a plus-ten K-12 PTR increase. And this current year, we're allocating nearly twenty million dollars in the budget to prevent a plus-three PTR increase. The dollars, as we all know, run out next year. So I think one of the interesting things here is that my understanding is that of the federal relief funds is that districts were allowed to use them to supplement and not supplant. And I think that we have been forced to, to do the opposite. We have supplanted, or the state of Alaska has forced ASD to maintain people-teacher ratios by supplanting the static funding with federal relief funds. Um, I think that raises maybe some interesting questions. Um, next slide, please. Um, so, uh, about a year ago, this board authorized a revised adequacy study. Um, this was, uh, released to the board in January of twenty twenty-three. This is just from the introduction. Um, and it defines, um, what we would need to allow each normal-sized school to offer students equal opportunity to achieve the state's curriculum and performance standards. Next slide, please. And the findings about eighty pages later, um, involved a thirteen thousand six hundred and twelve uh, BSA figure with the note that with that figure, there would need to be strategic changes to the foundation formula. Again, this is a formula that has not been substantially revised since, um, nineteen ninety-eight, the FY ninety-eight. Um, so, and then last slide. And here we are. We have nearly static, um, levels of the base student allocation. We have that thirty-dollar increase for this year. We have the district's calculation of what an inflation-adjusted, um, base student allocation would be. I think there's some interesting, there's sort of an interesting question that, um, board members in Anchorage and statewide wrestled with. And what does it mean to inflation-proof things? Does it, does it reflect just the Alaska sort of urban CPI, or is it national? At some point, I don't know if it matters that much. Um, the gap is tremendous, and neither of those figures are thirteen thousand. Um, so I think that this is just inflation-proofing, and inflation-proofing may not speak to adequacy, may not provide adequacy. In fact, maybe it does not. So I'm gonna pause where I spoke enough, and I would like to open the floor, um, I would like to call him, Dr. Pikeus, like he said, call me Larry. So we're gonna talk, call him Larry, um, for a second.
I have just a couple of questions. On the PTA, that's based upon allocated positions?
Oh, PTR.
PTR, uh, I'm sorry. Uh, PTR, is that based on allocated positions or filled positions? Because right now, the PTR would be much larger, obviously, if we're looking at that.
Yeah, those are the, to my, to my understanding, in the, in act for...
Through the budgeted.
Those are the budgeted PTRs.
Actually, PTR, if we're gonna address PTR, you have to fill the job, so you have to have enough money to fill, to be able to hire people. So we're back into that category, too.
Right, but we have lost some enrollment, too, and kept the same, you know, we're staffing. So there's gonna be some adjustment by school. Um, it's not gonna be exact, of course, but you're right.
But, but yeah, that figure up there, as far as money, doesn't address having adequate number for, for, to be able to pay enough teachers. It just shows if, if anybody would take a job at our current rates, that we do it. Second thing is, I know that, uh, the Pike-Selfman study also addressed areas in administration where there could be some changes. I'm not looking to go into a discussion right now, but if we go forward with this, we want to make sure that we can respond to any one of those issues. If they said we have too many assistant principals, we could do this differently, we could do that. I just want to make sure that we're not vulnerable with, with those issues being out there without giving a good explanation. But that's, that's just, I just thought I thought that out, and that was it.
My, my question would be, how would you define adequacy at this point in time? If you could just sort of create a...
For generally or for the Anchorage School District? I'm not sure the definition is different, but I'm gonna try.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm interested, maybe I'll pause there. Um, could you tell us about the evolution of the concept of adequacy to begin with?
Yes, I was a professor, so I used to speak in fifty meters. So I'm trying not to do that here. Uh, but there's a, the, the historical context is actually kind of interesting. If you go back to the early nineteen hundreds, the concern was different property tax bases provided different revenues for schools, and we need to find ways to equalize that. So, and then we wanted to ensure that people had equal tax rates for equal amount spent. So until the nineteen sixties, that was largely what school finance equity is thought about, it was really equity. And it was really a taxpayer equity kind of an issue, and maybe an issue with same amount of money for students across school districts. Uh, the equity movement really kicked off big in the nineteen sixties. Uh, there's a couple of cases in federal court that never went anywhere. Um, a case in, New Jersey case in California, you know, Robinson, Jersey, Toronto, California, that, that forced states to start thinking about, closely start thinking about equity financial models. A lot of states, there was litigation around that, and we did a lot of work in equity. In nineteen ninety-five, there was, I can't remember the name of the case in, in West Virginia, in probably the early nineteen eighties, a case in Kentucky, Rose versus Kentucky, that where the court pretty much said, education has to include these various components. It was very detailed in West Virginia. Uh, Kentucky also laid out a series of things that state should provide for students. And the state's never quite funded it in the way we might think of it today, but it sort of started people thinking about it. Nineteen ninety-five, uh, professor at Wisconsin, Bill Klug, he's a law school professor, involved in school finance. He wrote an article that really defined adequacy. And as it's evolved since that time, the way to think about it is, buy sufficient resources so that all students can meet high performance standards. It very much fits the things that you put up there that have come out of the adequacy language, uh, that's fallen in statute out of the Alaska Constitution. I mean, it's, it's, it feels like what you've, what your constitution and what your legislature has, has looked at and thought about is how I would define adequacy. That's the easy part, if you will. The hard part is, how do you measure that? How do you think of what it is? And the evidence-based model is one of four models in literature that, that attempt to test it. I'm personally, in terms of interest in thinking, is the best, but, but there are some disagree with me on that.
What, I know that we have received now two full studies, but if you could help everyone understand, what are the key components of your evidence-based model? Why does it work?
So, the way we division the evidence-based model, and it is, it's kind of a growing, evolving, living model, so it's not a static thing as we learn more about education. But Alan and I, and the people we work with, look at educational research. Look at, to the extent that there are randomized experimental design studies with the programs in education, to the extent that there are other research, uh, qualitative research, kinds of studies, plus experimental research on programs in education, and actually the literature that comes from, from the knowledge of educators themselves. It turns out people who work at your schools know a lot about how to teach children, and there's a lot to learn from them. So we don't want to ignore that either, uh, which is a good thing. Um, we try to keep up with, read, follow that literature, and, you know, we do the best we can. I think we have a pretty good feel for, for the major stuff. I would say that, um, at this point in time, we have a pretty, the people in education have a pretty good feel about what constitutes a good school. We, how schools work, what we need to do and how to do it. There are different ideas, different thoughts, but there's more agreement than disagreement around what it ought to look like. We didn't say, okay, how would you build a school that would actually enable you to do all these things? And of course, that then requires great leadership as well, and great teachers to implement it, and then just have it magically with funds. And, and so we then tried to, tried to figure out what would it take to do this, what would make sense, how would it do it? The table you presented apart up there, that's, that's sort of the core of the evidence-based model. How many teachers do you need? We also had that great picture with the ovals. I love seeing that. I've modified it. Now I have squares. But, um, and, and I have a slide I can put up and show you if you're interested in something, um, or a certain slide. But, but the idea is, is what do we think school ought to look like to be adequate and give the students those bad chance? And of course, the problem is, the problem, the truth is, we know a lot about the education research, we know a lot about school finance. We don't know very much about Alaska compared to the people sitting in this room, or Wyoming, or whatever state we're in. Um, and so we, we then have what we call professional judgment panels. We did that in both of the studies that, that we do here, where we bring in people from all levels of the school system and say, this is our model. This is why we, what we think is important, this is how, and we get feedback. And the feedback in, in, in Anchorage, which is one of the places we've done it, suggested there, you know, are some things that one probably needs to think about. I still have nightmares over a snow room, okay?
Gone.
Well, I saw the piles of a few parking lots. Um, you know, and even in Wyoming, which is, every state is unique. So let's start with that premise. The state that I would think of as kind of the closest to the rest of the kinds of issues you do in Alaska might be Wyoming. We have twenty years of experience in working Wyoming, so we've, we've done some work in thinking about adjustments for small schools and for schools with, with difficult, not difficult, but with unique populations and differences. So we, we, we thought about that. I did a study with, with Diane and, and, and a couple of people who are staff, I don't know how many years ago now, where we looked at, I think, a fourteen-student school.
We, we went out, we worked with, um, Steve Outwater and, and used Lake and Penn as, uh, gee, how would this work in a really remote, uh, district?
And, and of course, it becomes very complicated because half of the budget buys utilities because of the nature of the district. And, and even here, your utilities is, is Alan's, this last study Alan did virtually all the work on, so I'm, you know, catching up to him. He has to be here. Uh, but, 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 you know, as he pointed out, our model is three hundred and fifty dollars, and you spend two hundred dollars a, a child born in that already. So, so there obviously is some, some need to find two numbers and, and, and build a, 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 a more sophisticated model, particularly if you wanted to go statewide. And then, once you've got a number, and, and the concept behind this, the second study, the study that was just done last year, was use Anchorage, if you will, as the one-point-zero district, figure out what the costs are here, and then what adjustments do you make across other districts in the state for, for, for size, geographic cost, for, for other things that, that can cross. Uh, and then you total all that up, and that's, in theory, what it ought to allocate. Uh, some states take that number and try to get to the, the base number, you know, and, and, Alaska, the challenge is, your base student allotment?
Allocation.
Allocation, I'm sorry. I have ESA, I got that right. Um, is not what you really spend for student. You do this, as I, as I try, as I said to Alan, I said, yeah, Anchorage has forty-two thousand students, but they get the base student allotment for double that number, give or take a little. It looks at me like I'm crazy, because he thought, wow, it's easy to show there are inadequate five thousand. I said, no, it's probably closer to ten. Um, you know, just work out of the way he and I would think about it. And, and that's, of course, the case, that you, you put up some of those things where it really showed about how we take those steps to do it. Um, and, and so that's, you know, that's the state's way of making the adjustments for the characteristics of all the school districts in Alaska.
Anyways, you know.
We might recommend doing it a little differently in some ways. Uh, he did. Um, I might think after some of the things he's doing and what I've been learning, we might, moreover, talk to the folks in Alaska to think of some other ways to do that. But it would require really understanding, you know, the characteristics of Alaska. And Alaska's different from Wyoming, and one big difference is Anchorage is way bigger than Cheyenne or, uh, Casper, which are the two biggest cities there. So it's, it's a much bigger, and distances have a whole different meaning here. Really can't just get in the car and drive sometimes, okay? You always can in Wyoming unless the weather's bad, but, um, here you can't. So there's a lot of things that I think you've wrestled with and worked with in the past in the state, but some of them feel like they're kind of old. Diane showed me this stat. Oh, my goodness, school finance thing is a whole...
Can you talk us through any instances where the evidence-based model has been used in, um, litigation? And, and what effect that may have had on the school systems?
The model has not been used in litigation that is someone sued and said it's not adequate, and the evidence-based model is not providing enough. That hasn't come up directly yet.
Okay.
Okay? It's been used more as, uh, in, in some states that have done it, have done an adequacy, set of adequacy studies. Okay, it's been used more as, uh, in some states that have done it, have done adequacy, set of adequacy studies or one of our adequacy studies. And with the exception of one study, we've always suggested states need to spend more on education. We actually said they spend more than they need to and it was largely one of the way they do special education, okay? They just and they spend a lot of money on children for months, so it's very different. It's more often used, we've tended to work sort of coming after the fact. Okay, the best example, if if I could use Wyoming again, I'm sorry to keep using Wyoming. As long as I use California, I'm okay, right? They had a suit, they built a model, we came in and built a revised vision of it after the court had ruled parts of the model worked, parts didn't. We built a new model, but the court required that it be recalibrated every five years. And so we we built, we've done study in two thousand and five, ten, fifteen and twenty. And looked at the numbers and adjusted the numbers and made it work. But what we also did is we created a strategy where they wanted to avoid further litigation. An argument was the resources and the way we suggest they be used, our theory of action. Every school ought to be able to enable students to perform at high levels. And when they sue you because they're not performing at their high levels and they want more money, your first answer is, is how are you using the money? And are you using it in the way that the model says? And if you're not, you go to court to say, huh, they used it the right way, they think we have a problem. Now, that's probably a reach too, schools still wouldn't get as far as we want. I'm looking super tentative, knows as hard as it work here, it never works as nicely as we want. Children are just with children are all different and wonderful and beautiful and it's never as easy as we as as a court we think it is. They are now, of course, they've been sued by many other districts. So after that, that strategy worked for twenty years, which is currently a lawsuit. I don't honestly know where it's gonna go. We would, I would assume we were, we are working for the state, we're representing the state, but but so far they've only asked me to be a fact witness, not a. So I think they're just, they believe still that the model works and the model is what they should have. And I just need to tell them what the facts are and how it's gone. So we'll see where that leads you, but I don't know, twenty years without lawsuits, pretty good. Especially since it take eighty, ten years to to track through the system, right? So. Can I ask your question?
Well, I I always appreciate historical context and um, sort of knowing that this has been used for some time in a state that is reasonably analogous to Alaska. I I'm also, I mean, I have, I would like to open space for other questions. But I saw it in a paper just a couple of days ago in New York Times, that California, as recently as twenty twenty filed. Uh, there was a lawsuit about the lowest performing schools in California. And it was found that they were, I want to get the right language. They didn't have adequate access to literacy, I think is what the finding was, and that led to a fifty million dollar settlement. That was then allocated across seventy five of the state's lowest performing schools. At about six hundred and. Six hundred and sixty, six hundred and forty two thousand per school. And that that ended up having, and there was just a study on how they use these, a very high return on investment. Um, I think that we all know that class sizes are a very expensive thing to do, but they allowed these low performing schools to take the money they received from a successful lawsuit. And invest them kind of flexibly. And they found some pretty great rates of growth. Um, so I just, what else can you tell us about that?
You pretty well summarized the study.
And the, well, the concept of inadequate access to literacy seem different than inadequate funding.
And the schools had some flexibility in how they use the money.
Yeah.
So, you know, we would argue, it depends, California is a tricky place. Because many of the schools that are very low performing, they're in some of the big cities, they have very large teacher regions. So they may have used a fair amount of money to hire more teachers to make classes smaller. There are districts where class sizes are closer to the kind of ranges we think makes sense. They'll usually level usually a little higher than fifteen or something. In that case, we think that 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 actually using resources to 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 provide coaches for um, teachers. To provide additional tutoring services for children. Are really more cost effective approaches to improving student literacy. And I'm not sure, I saw the article both in New York Times, that there's an organization in California, Edsource, which I I think reported at first and I think it's from the Times guy. I remember the order of emails. And and Edsource is a policy group, it's studies policy. I was under, by, I was under, for fourteen years, the president of Edsource. I think a lot of Edsource today. The. The important thing would be to understand what the districts did and see if there's differences in in approaches to doing this and 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 if there are differences in student that growth and student outcomes. But what is really exciting is to see that by investing direct resources in this with a lot of emphasis, I, we want this to work. It appears that it actually has. Now, now the challenge that I see is just investing it once and then it sort of disappears, performance probably go back down. And there's a, this is getting to be old study now, I mean, it was around when we did our work in the state of Washington, which was in two thousand and six. It was a reading recovery study and what they had found was they put a lot of reading recovery money in, student performance went way up. Okay, kids are doing great, we don't need to spend the money anymore. Performance went down and and the reason is not that the kids lost any ground individually, they probably did just fine. But every year you have different children, okay? So five years later, the sixth graders are different and unless you continue to provide them those resources, they became from the same families, the same households that the earlier children did. And whatever challenges they faced, they probably still do. And so you have, once you've built that, you need to kind of keep it. Now, what undergirds a lot of our model, which is is helpful sometimes, is, you know, because sometimes people look at this and say, well, how can you afford it? What can you do? There are places where we actually have fewer resources than 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 schools typically have. We probably have fewer site administrators. And and the challenge is how you implement fewer site administrators on the bet that having more counselors and more coaches and more tutors are really gonna help kids. And 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 solve some discipline issues. It's sort of like you almost need to make the investment of let's keep the administrators, invest in these other programs and then maybe we can reduce administrators later. It's also very hard when you have a position to walk away from it. It works that way everywhere I've been, it doesn't have to be in public agencies, it works in private agencies, I think private companies that way as well. It's tricky to do. So you've always got that challenge of of of, you know, how do you reallocate resources? And 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 we think that if you've got more counselors, more people looking every day at the social emotional needs of children. What I would say is, if you look at the early versions of our model and compare it to the later versions of our model, there are more of those resources. And and those are still mostly pre-COVID versions of our model. So I think since COVID, we've kind of had a sense that the importance of that kind of uh, support for for students and their families is, you know, we're here. I apologize, I'll stop there when it comes to you.
I don't want to take over the entire meeting, so please join in with questions.
My coffee, my snacks, all of this, but I'm interested in studies that show the correlation between adequate funding and academics. And because the other, I'm sure that the state trying to, or any any organization opposed to try to do it will try to dismiss that, that it's not related. But studies that show the correlation.
So. First of all, the most important would be causation rather than correlation. Of course, it's harder to show, um, you know, big statistical studies, uh, you know, can easy, can can show correlation, but what you're really after is more causation, I think. That's been the holy grail of school finance forever. And early studies, it it wasn't when I went through that little historical thing about equity and adequacy, it was a piece where we talked about productivity. We tried to say, how do how does money matter? And and the primary sets of studies that came out were vastly different in how they were done, hugely different quality of the studies. And Eric Kanichak, uh, who you've all heard his name, came to the conclusion that money didn't, he didn't say money doesn't matter. He says that we don't systematically use money in ways that make a difference for students to learn. And today, if you talk to him about it, he'll say, we still actually have that problem. And the place we're gonna find those those systematic links is with teachers and what teachers are doing in the classroom every day. Which is really important to say and it's kind of like, yeah, why are we surprised to hear that, right? That's where, if you will, that's the unit of production is the classroom. Since he started publishing these things a long, long time ago. Oh, yeah, a very long, I edited a book, I had a chapter from Rick and I had a chapter from uh, some folks who were in one of the original critiques of his work. It was like nineteen ninety six, so we've been at this for thirty years. And Rick was doing it before then. You know, there's more studies that are using more sophisticated models that look at if. Different and I would argue better statistical tools than we had when I got my degree also many years ago. That are actually starting to show um, that it really does make a difference. So, um, you know. Think that as we do more of those studies, we'll see more, there's also, um, and and Alan mentions this in the, we mentioned this in the report that that we did for the beginning of the year. The idea of of effect sizes, of course. That gets into a lot of folks to talk about it, but maybe as studies get bigger, samples are bigger, sort of the the power of effect sizes seems to go down. Because there's there's more variation and more things going on there. And sort of course, we need smaller, except smaller effect sizes is being important. And then, you know, Hattie has now created effect sizes for everything you can think of in a school. And it's it's, you know, how would you prioritize, how would you think about them? And 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 he's kind of spoke to some of our classes occasionally, it's kind of interesting how he's pushing on that. He says you can prioritize them, but he has fairly some way of thinking about it that. I'm not sure he's wrong, though, he's right.
Follow that up, causation between class sizes and academics, so get away from the money. But you've got so many states that have a maximum effect of classroom sizes and some of those pretty conservative states that wouldn't want to spend a penny more than they have to. So there's got to be some evidence or something out there supporting the fact that that they need to do that. I'm just wondering, just regarding the money, what it costs to do with the correlation, I mean, the causation between class sizes and outcomes.
So that's obviously, you know, if you go talk to anybody, smaller classes are better than larger classes. I'm I'm hard pressed to tell you that's wrong, in fact, I wouldn't stand up and say that's wrong. We all feel that that's right, certainly teachers will tell you, they have opportunities to work more with students, do more individual things, perform better, it's really important. What we don't is we don't have a lot of, um, you know, clear experimental design research studies that look at that. The problem is that I'm, I'm gonna look at superintendent just because he'd be the one to get the phone calls, although the rest of you probably would too.
A randomized trial.
Yeah, a randomized trial, your kid's going in a big class, your kid's going in a small class, you got, which one is good with that, okay? I mean, it's as simple as that. Um, and 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 so those are hard to do. You know, the the granddaddy of those studies is something called Tennessee Star and it's like a really old study. But it's sort of two things that we've taken away from it is is, and it was really in elementary schools. The smaller classes seem to show effects well through into high school. They they diminished over time, but they really were, students did better. And then they had three groups, they had smaller classes, larger classes and larger classes with instructional aids. And the aids didn't seem to have any effect on student performance. That's why you don't see any aids in our models, except for special ed and preschool.
Like, but if I can add one thing, of course, I was working at a case, which is policy analysis for California education. At the time, California was implementing smaller class sizes in elementary. And there was no substantive improvement in student improvement because there weren't enough certificated educators. And so they were throwing, breathing humans who passed um, the uh, the security, you know. They 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 passed the fingerprint and so. Class size reduction is not a magic bullet if you don't actually have the staffing. The quality of the educator in the classroom and a reasonable sized class is more important perhaps than a smaller class. And a bunch of, a a bunch of adults who are not qualified to work. And and that is a huge challenge right now when we can't fill.
And that was exactly what I was gonna say next. You were perfect, I said the the nuance, sorry, I interrupted you, sir.
I think I was just gonna say, and then you also need a modicum of performance management, which doesn't exist in all states.
But but you know, it's so, so in California, if I go to Los Angeles, you'd find where I live, and classes are thirty five and thirty seven students. It's very expensive to reduce class sizes, but unnecessary. But is it worth reducing a class from twenty eight to twenty five on average? Or would you invest that money in coaches to make better teachers and tutors to help students learn? And that's. We went around the room and before ten of us, we probably have eleven opinions about that. So it's not like it's a simple thing to answer or solve right away.
I I recall uh, at National School of Association in Boston, a presentation, they came out of Philadelphia School District location where they put the emphasis on K through three, they have all its reading. And they got ninety percent of the effectiveness of lower classroom sizes to all of them. I don't know if that was a validated study or not. It seemed logical to the group at times, if you can make sure kids are reading right at the right grade, then it's gonna carry forward.
All the reading by third grade is hugely powerful word.
Whenever the time's right, I'll jump in.
Jump in, go ahead.
Yeah, sure, thank you, um, so appreciate the information, this is super impactful, important information to be shared and appreciate the expertise. This is neat. But the thing that we hear as as board members quite a bit is um, the concept of hesitance to to throw, using a phrase, not. Not saying I agree with it, throwing good money after bad, right? So kind of a different model of maybe the opposite, the polar opposite of evidence based. Where outcomes should improve before further investment occurs. And can you point me to a district that you've observed, studied, um, read about that you've seen outcomes improve? Investment occur and then further outcomes improve, does that district exist?
Not that I, but I'd ask a different question. And and you're essentially saying, if a school can succeed under current circumstances, then they get more money. But if they can't succeed under current circumstances, they don't, so it feels backward to me. Okay, now you you added on a really important piece of it, though, when you said, they approve, we give them more money and they continue to improve. And that whole three part thing, I'm not, I'm not aware of a study that's that's actually looked at that, tried to figure out if that mattered or not. And there's so many other variables that would go to, it'd be a tricky study to kind of look at. Um, how are my economist friends, they shoot me at all over the place if you tried to do it, I can just see that happening. But but I I guess what I would argue is is, you know. Our adequacy model will will probably cost more than you currently spend in Alaska, it tends to in every state. It's, there are four models of adequacy and what we've generally found is. Ours is the least expensive. And that's not to say you should buy ours because it's the least expensive, it's the best deal. It's to say, so maybe that's where you start. And if that's not enough, then maybe you go on, but maybe you can do it with this level of resources. And what we're finding is there's there's another model that also uses professional judgment panels, but takes their expertise and then builds cost rather than our expertise and then. Validated or not, by 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 the expert panels. And because we do a lot of work, it's it's APA, I can put pledge it used to be called, they do a lot of the those and we we work with them a lot now. Because most states want multiple studies done.
And they did the equity study back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen APA, so they've also worked in this state.
And they're and they're very good friends of ours, John Igerblut, cut his teeth working for Alan Aden Education Commission of the States in the seventies, went into business, Alan became professor. They hired a twenty year old kid, I don't know how many years ago, named Justin Silverstein, he's the CEO of APA now and he's my buddy. And we 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 work together, our models aren't that different. They 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 set up, they model differently, they look at cost a little, you know, their tables look different. But often we're not that far apart, uh, which suggests, again, we sort of know what it takes. And then the thing I always do in a in a in a political judgment panel, now the report says you were at the one of our panels, I I don't remember if you were, I'm here at the beginning of the year, I think you were. We always look at the, when someone says, well, we need smaller class sizes, we say, well, what's the rationale? What's the research base? You know, when they say we need to do this, we always ask them and. Sometimes teachers are aware of the research base and know it, sometimes less so. And and it's not that they have to know the research base, but there's an awful lot of fad of the day kind of stuff that you go on in education. We just want to be sure we're we're talking about strong research based findings as best we can. And 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 the problem is, is it's really forty two thousand children in your district, so it's kind of messy. And next year, there'll be forty two thousand, but a lot of them will be different. And so um, how do, how do we make sure we're building systems where teachers have the ability to to understand what children need? And work with them to help them learn to perform. That's why smaller class sizes are better, gives them more opportunity to understand your needs. But there also are tools you can use on a bigger levels and different ways of teaching that that can also sort of sort of make that work.
I'm sure, can I call it quickly? I know time is limited and I feel like I'm learning a chapter of an important permit. We in Alaska, at least as I understand it, we at one point were annually appropriating a dollar amount that we were figuring was the best possible amount that we could and could afford. And then we settled on the foundation formula and now we kind of have a hybrid system where the foundation formula is kind of capped at a certain amount. And now we kind of have a hybrid system where the foundation formula is kind of capped at a certain amount. They're appropriating one time funds on top. Could you spoke to it a bit earlier. Could you speak to where the intersection is on like the evidence based model and stability and predictability of funding for districts?
I would say stability and predictability is critical to the success of schools. Okay, I've seen a announcement and stuff that you're giving 10% cut. That's that's just, you know, traumatic. And the simplest example I could use is your own household budget. Okay, I mean, you want some stability, you want to know that if you make X this year, you're going to make at least X next year, and hopefully a little more. Because costs, especially the last couple of years, costs have gone up in a number of places. And operating a school system is really no different. The the costs of everything, even if you only pay personnel the same as you paid them last year, your healthcare costs will go up, the cost of many of the supplies and things you buy may go up, the cost of fuel may go up. And that's kind of an interesting problem in Alaska because the cost of gas goes up. Also, it means the revenue went up for the state, how do you get a piece of that? But it's, it's a slower upwards trail than than just the, you would think the revenues would would give you. So it's, it's, if you, if you have this constant bouncing up and down, it's going to be much harder to allocate a steady stream of resources to manage a growth program for student learning. And, yeah. None of us want to worry about having our salary cut next year or not having the colleague we value not being here next year. So that creates lots of stress and lots of challenges. Thank you.
I'm not sure I can answer this in the right way. You mentioned third grade, reading by third grade is an indicator. And what I wondered is, a child who's not reading on level by third grade, have we missed some opportunity? It's very hard to recover. I I think it makes a lot of sense to me that if a child's behind in third grade, we don't do much differently. They're going to be behind in sixth grade, they're going to be behind in 12th grade, they're going to be behind when they're adults. But but I think we're also making an assumption if we if we fail to get them reading on level by third grade, there's something irretrievable. And I'm wondering if you're aware of research that shows that one way or the other.
Yeah, well, there's, there's like three different things here because one is how we're measuring whether children are are at grade level with their reading when we have many people who are coming from second language learning backgrounds. And we actually have language immersion programs where it is very clear that high quality immersion or dual language programs will have lower test scores through about sixth grade. And by eighth grade, those children are often outperforming the monolabel speakers. So we have that track, and which is why there was such an uproar with having a rigid reading by third grade, like piece of legislation from especially the heritage language community indigenous folk. The second issue is, and I'm thinking we were talking about the accelerated schools model, that some of it is how we respond. No, there's, children develop at different levels. We know there's a lot of literature that says if a young, if a if a female student is not reading at grade level by fourth grade, is where I've seen it, their chances of being pregnant by seventh to eighth, ninth grade are pretty high. So there are some strong correlations with behavior and not succeeding in school. On the other hand, it's how you respond. The accelerated schools movement, at least as it was initially designed, said if a child is behind, you don't hold them back, which has been our tradition. When we look at children that are struggling, we tend to say, we're going to go slower and we're going to repeat this again. As we do the same, like when we used to have Algebra A B here, two years of Algebra One, rather than saying children who need, who are struggling in algebra, need support, tutoring, other ways of. The accelerated schools model said, let's give them additional support. Let's catch them up. So there's, there are ways to catch children up. It is a matter of finding out what that right way is for those children with whatever learning challenge they are facing. So so that's the issue is, is it is thoughtfully assessing why a child is not scoring where we expect them to score at the end of third grade? And is it that they are in the dual language program? Or is it that they have an undiagnosed reading disability? Or is it simply that they've not had access because they're in a home where there might not be the literacy things? And so, no, third grade is not some magic cut off. It's, it's how we respond.
I just, I want to be calm as a time. The English School District is large and incredibly diverse. It has a highly mobile population. We have, for decades now, had growing populations of students who qualify for special education services, which are more acute and more intense. If anyone cares to look at that, the rest of that D document from 2001, there are no fewer than 27 items detailing why mandates had increased ASC's costs dramatically for special ed and then also bilingual education between 1887 and 2000. We have student groups who are chronically the lowest performing. In your, I guess, expert opinion, and maybe this is what I see in the formula here, do students with more acute needs need additional resources from the state? From the district? From both? I mean, who's responsible for providing the additional resources that students who come into a school system demonstrate that they need?
I think there's two parts to that question. First one is the students with special, struggling students, we call them, okay? And and we, because you could get really complicated with this, we sort of have three categories. Children with disabilities, there's essentially children with IEPs. And first, children with very severe disabilities, we just think the state has to pay for it all, wherever they are. Because the truth is, if a child comes in with an IEP that costs $250,000, it's a big nut to crack here, but you can do it. If you go to a district with 500 children and somebody shows up with that bill, they may not be able to at all. Then the state has to pay for it, so they have to pay for it here too. Okay, and you might, that's the first part. Beyond that, there's, you know, there's children with disabilities, English language learners, and then children from low income homes. Those are the pieces we use, and we add a lot of additional resources for those children. As to who should pay for it, it's sort of, if the concept is this child, every child needs, you know, we start every child needs $10,000. And a English language learner child needs $11,000. And a low income child needs $12,500. And on average, a child with a disability needs $20,000, which is kind of what the national studies have all come to across states. Then we total that all up and see how much money Anchorage or any school district needs to spend. How that's divided between the state and the local governments? There's 50 states, there's 50 different ways to do that. And and each state, the algebra of figuring out how to do it is really simple, okay? The politics of it is immensely complex. You all know this, you're all, we got elected school board members, we have school superintendent, you know, people who study these sorts of things. You're the president, so so bargaining unit, is that the right term? I want to say union leaders, but but bargaining unit leaders. We'll have to figure out how to get that together and and what the right thing is. So it's, so, and then, you know, there's questions of what's a state revenue source, what's a local revenue source? It's more clear cut in in parts of Alaska than others, but some of what goes on in in some of the more remote areas, I'm never quite sure I understand what a local town's responsibility is or how they raise it, because it's, it's tricky. In California, we have a constitution that limits our property tax to 1% and limits how much it can grow based on its value. And this legislature determines how that 1% that I pay, that everybody pays, is divided across the taxing jurisdictions in which I live. I call that a state tax, not a local tax, but it's paid locally through the county assessor. So there's 50 different levels. And the answer to that second part is, is what's right for Alaska? And that's, as you know, like it is in 50 other states, a hard thing to balance out and work out. Well, in 49 other states, why is it one school district, the state legislature does it all, they decide what. It's so hard there.
I have one, I see that we are over time. And we have, yes, okay. I will hold my thought. Did you have one last question? Okay, I want to be respectful of everyone's time with the closing remarks that you're available for future conversation this evening. You'll be at.
Yeah, UAA. So tonight, we have a reception starting at 5:30 because we wanted to make sure we ate before we started. The program starts at 7:00. It's Arts 150, and parking is free in the parking lot that's past Arts 150. So we want to make sure.
I will say, thank you so much for taking the time today to be here. A lot of notes, and appreciate your perspective and advocacy.
And you asked me to stay for the executive session.
And we, yes, we would like you to stay for the executive session, yes.
I didn't want to stay if you didn't want me.
Yes, we would like to ask you to stay for the executive.
Or if it's inappropriate.
Let's make a motion to adjourn. Okay, I, okay, I will adjourn. The finance committee meeting. Returning to executive session.
Editing the report, then I need to.
This was, you have a moment, then we need to start a separate recording for general meetings.
Wait, for a general meeting?
We need to briefly record a separate recording to start a regular meeting to then move into executive.